I'd like to bring to order the November 9th meeting of the Tiverton Town Council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Mallow.
Counselor Sousa.
Present.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Mallow.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor DiMedeiras.
Present.
Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier.
Present.
All present.
Approval of consent agenda. Approval of regular council meeting minutes, October 13th, 2015. Approval of regular council meeting minutes, October 26th, 2015. Approval of executive session minute, council meeting, October 26th, 2015. Receipt and minutes from the filing boards and commission. Our council, Historic Preservation Advisory Board, Recreation Committee, and Open Space. Correspondence received and filed. Town Administrator FY 2016 Community Service Grant, Tiverton Senior Center, $4,935. Approval of tax successor abatements. Denise Surratt, Treasurer, Quarterly Budget Report Summary for September 30th, 2015, provided to the Division of Municipal Finance and Auditor General. Town Administrator Police and Fireman Overtime Reports for October. Kate Michaud. Planning Board Administrative Office Reports of October Activities with Attached Ad-Hoc Technical Review Committee Meeting Notes. Town Administrator Department Monthly Reports for 2015. Any of the councils like to take anything off the consent agenda?
Madam President, CA 6, please.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second, all in favor? Unanimous. CA 6. Town Administrator Police and Fire Overtime Reports for October.
Madam President, I know we discussed this at two meetings ago about the overtime in the police and fire departments. I know we were down, I think it was for firemen at the time. Are we making any progress on that?
Matt.
Hope this thing works from this distance. Councilman, as you know, we go through a process to populate the list. We go through a screening interview and then a test. Chief Lloyd is back there. Someone make sure I get the numbers correct. You had 16 qualify for the test and nine showed up.
Yes.
Anything else you want to add?
Yes, sir. 16 applied for the test. Nine showed up for the test. I just got the results back and only five passed.
So, Councilman, the wrong answer to your short question is that we're going to continue to populate the list as best we can. I think we're going to have to go out and advertise again. Even if this entire group is successful, we're still going to need a deeper list.
Yes, sir. Are we hiring any of the five? We have to work through the personnel board next step. So that's the next step. Yes, sir. All five are qualified?
I haven't quite gone through it in that depth yet. They should be all qualified at this point, depending on how they make out in their interviews.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve CA 6.
Can I make a request to keep this on the agenda for the next meeting?
The Police and Fire Time Overtime Report.
Yes, please. Thank you.
I've been putting it on every single meeting because that's what we've been doing for a year now to keep track of it.
Thank you.
Madam President, just so everyone understands that with the three-platoon, 56-hour workweek system, our overtime reports are calculated and published after the 28-day look-back. So your numbers will be up to date on a monthly basis because we're looking back over a 28-day cycle. Now, we should be talking about this every meeting. I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't. I'm just saying in terms of getting good, accurate numbers, it's on a monthly rotational basis.
Just for the record, overtime is still low compared to last year and despite...
And I know when we negotiated the contract, there was overtime built into it.
Right.
But I just want to make sure that it doesn't get out of control again.
Okay.
And with having four firemen down, it's going to get out of control again.
I also have another one that just got injured. Will need surgery on his hand, but he was off-duty that was injured. And I've got one that should be coming back from a long-term illness.
And I want to, it's not going to get out of control like it was a year.
We're trying our hardest not to, but again, it comes back to sheer numbers.
If you don't continually fulfill the needs of those men by putting the proper people in there, it will.
Correct.
Just like it did last year when we were so down. Any other questions from the council? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve CA 6.
Make a motion to approve CA 6?
Motion been made in second, all those in favor? Mr. Lambert.
Madam President, I move that Item B2 be taken up as our next item under public hearings and public presentations.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion been made in second, all those in favor? Unanimous. Proposal for Casino in Tiverton, Plot 203, Lot 111, Plot 204, Lots 101, 102, 103, 106, and 108, West Side of William Canning Boulevard. Final presentation of concept proposed by Johnny Taylor Jr., Chairman of Twin Rivers Worldwide Holding Incorporated. I'd like to say that this is Twin Rivers' final presentation next Monday, November 16th. We will have a public hearing where the public can give us comments and speak with the council concerning whatever you want to do with the casino. At that time, I'm hoping that next week, the vote will be made. All right, just so everybody knows. So this presentation right now takes a half hour. The council may have some questions for Mr. Taylor. All right, John? We have to leave.
You can, we actually have monitors, so you can stay in your seats and the presentation will show up in front of you.
Are we in the way of the audience looking at the...
No, I think it should be high. I think it should be high enough. Thank you. Thank you for all the time that you have given us over the last six months. We appreciate the opportunity to finally get to this moment in time where we can take everything that we've learned through the summer and present it to you in a form that hopefully you find acceptable. I don't need to go through this. We've talked about this on multiple occasions. So tonight is the opportunity for the town council and the town to receive a definitive proposal from Twin River. And then from there, we will request at the appropriate time that you consider a resolution asking the General Assembly to put the question on the ballot. Where we began this discussion was really with a piece of land and a concept. And we didn't come with any preconceived notions. We didn't have a definitive program. We didn't tell you we wanted to build, you know, a hotel or not a hotel. We basically said we wanted to have a discussion with the town. And we spent the better part of the summer meeting wherever people would have us to gather information. And we learned a lot about the town. We learned a lot about what people are concerned about and what they might find acceptable or not acceptable with a gaming facility on that location. So these are the issues that kind of came out in those discussions. If you ask me summarize them, this is my summarization of what we learned. You know, from a tax revenue perspective, $4 million a year, which represents about 10% of the town's budget, seemed to be something that resonated with people. And as we've discussed in the past, in the state of Rhode Island, the economic relationship between a gaming facility and a town is codified into the general laws. So as we get into this presentation, we'll talk about those things that we are proposing become part of Rhode Island law. We also heard a lot about jobs and the need for jobs for Tiverton residents. And we'll talk about, we talked about existing employees from Newport Grand having the opportunity to come to Tiverton if they so chose, but then to build a pool of candidates from Tiverton residents. We heard a lot about downside risk. We heard concern that a gaming facility gets built here and the market is more challenging than we thought and the town isn't protected in that scenario. We heard about traffic and we heard that loud and clear, that, you know, we're not going to be able to have a convenience casino in that neighborhood without addressing traffic issues in a manner that is acceptable to the town. And you'll see a little later that what we propose is that that roundabout that is so important to mitigating traffic issues that exist there today as well as those that will come with a gaming facility need to be addressed. And the other thing we've told you in the past is that we won't open without it. We were told to be environmentally sensitive and to address some significant issues in the neighborhood: water pressure, wetlands, wildlife, stormwater management, all critical issues. We were told that the community needs to get comfortable, that safety and security issues can be addressed. And we heard, you know, really on a nightly basis, that there are some significant economic issues that face this town and how can we help? So our proposal. I think this will look familiar. When we were last here, we talked to you about a design that was, I think we framed it as lottery-inspired, something that came from your library, looking like your library. And we had an elevation, which was just a flat drawing of what a casino might look like in a hotel. So tonight, we're here to talk specifics about the specific program. So what we propose is an 85,000-square-foot building, which includes both front and back of house space. As I mentioned, it's library-inspired. 1,000 slot machines, 32 table games. About 65% of the square footage would be dedicated to front of house, which is more typical than in most casinos because we'll be able to do some of the back-of-house functions that we have out of Lincoln. Single-floor gaming environment, and we may have some offices on the second floor. Another issue that we were asked a lot about was, you know, will there be dedicated smoking and non-smoking areas? And there will be. And we will have optional valet parking for both the casino and the connected hotel in the port-cochere in the hotel or in the pictures that you see. From a food and beverage perspective, a sit-down restaurant that we would operate. If you've been to Twin River, you know that we operate Fred &amp; Steve's Steakhouse as well as the Wicked Good Sports Bar. Two or three takeaway restaurants, probably branded by third parties. A bar with entertainment offering and the seating capacity from a food and beverage perspective would be about 290 seats. We're proposing a hotel, 53,000-square-foot hotel with 84 sleeping rooms, three small meeting rooms and a breakfast room, three stories to meet the existing 35-foot height restrictions. And as we told you, not visible from the highway. None of this would be visible from the highway or local roads. Recall, when we were here for the charrettes, we told you about a balloon test that we had done and we got as high as 75 feet. And if we're at 35, I think we'll be in good shape. You know, limited service and scale. Think Hampton Inn, a small fitness center, and that would be entirely non-smoking. The all-in investment to put this facility on that site is approximately $75 million, which includes the casino, the hotel, and all other project costs. So this is a little bit more of, you know, an iteration of the site plan, a little bit more detailed than you saw from the past. You'll notice the roundabout in the far right-hand corner with a slight modification, which we'll talk about in a minute. The hotel faces the casino and the hotel, and all of the customer-facing activities face northwest. From the main entry to Stafford Road is probably about 1,100 feet. The employee parking sits in the parking lot to the back here. All of this is customer parking. We've included some, we heard a lot about wildlife in the charrettes. We included some nature overlooks and, of course, only for emergency access, a secondary way out of the property. Excuse me. I'll run through a few of the exterior shots of the casino. At the end of the presentation, we've actually had a video flyover developed as we had talked about through the course of our conversations with the town. This is on the outer edge of the parking lot. Interior view of the hotel lobby, as I mentioned. People would enter through the valet and it's connected to the casino. And then a view of the entrance. So as I mentioned, traffic was by far the single biggest issue for the local neighborhood, consistently raised by people who travel and live in that area as a critical factor in their daily lives and in something that we needed to be able to address. What we found, based on the proposal that we're putting together and putting before you tonight, is that the planned DOT roundabout with a modification will provide the solution to handle the type of traffic that will be there because of us. And that modification is a dedicated right-hand turn lane into the property. As you get to the roundabout, our traffic would be siphoned off and the rest of the traffic would find their way into the roundabout. Safety and security levels, or levels of service increase materially with the roundabout. This will be a materially safer intersection. And the levels of service, even at the most critical times, are never below acceptable Madam President, you mentioned when I was here last that I needed to have some conversations about this roundabout and the need to ensure that this was going to happen. And we have received commitments from the Raimondo Administration to ensure the completion of this roundabout. In addition, as we get into the legislative package that we have prepared, we are proposing that the roundabout be mandatory, be operational before the casino can be opened by law. And we have a commitment from the legislature and the administration on that as well. And as I told you last time we were here, we will not open without that roundabout in place either. So this is kind of a representation of what it will look like as part of the video that we'll show you in a little bit. This is the entrance to the property, and this is Canning, Stafford, Hurst, and Stafford. The other thing, the next biggest issue we heard, and some of the members of the council have specifically raised this in public, is that of water. And what we've found is that there's sufficient water exists in the North Tiverton Fire Department, Fire District, excuse me. The NTFD does have an inter-municipality agreement with the city of Fall River, and that system's operating at a very low capacity, driven in large part due to the loss of factories and mills in recent years. What we heard was there were significant water pressure issues in the neighborhood, both for fire suppression as well as for domestic use. Unfortunately, the town's model is not possible for us to accurately model a hotel and a casino on that site. Apparently, the existing water model is being updated by the town currently and won't be completed until 2016. So the solution for us was to take the issue onto the property and for us to install an onsite water storage tank for fire and domestic use. So domestic water use is predicted to be between 30,000 gallons per day and 65,000 at peak levels, with fire suppression requirements predicted at about 360,000 gallons to have available. So we will be, if this passes, we will install a 450,000-gallon storage tank, which we will draw down from for domestic use during the day, and we will refill that tank in the middle of the night. So the water pressure issues in the neighborhood should be addressed by that, and we will have plenty of water for fire suppression onboard at the facility. We've talked a lot about wetlands. The wetlands have been delineated now and verified through a walk-through with the Department Environmental Management. We're awaiting the formal approval letter from DEM. There's 23 out of the 45 acres that we have under control. There are 23 developable acres on the property. And we can get to the developable part, you know, with something in the environmental world parlance is called an insignificant wetland alteration. The entire site plan is designed around the delineated wetlands and the appropriate setbacks, and we're very comfortable that we've addressed those issues. From a wildlife perspective, we've begun the process of a four-season wildlife study to document wildlife utilization on the property. There'll be, work began last month and will continue for the next 12 months with an eye toward identifying rare or unique wildlife on the property. There'll be fixed wildlife survey plots in random locations, you know, through the summer looking for certain elements or certain breeds of animals and mammals in the area. And by the time we go to the voters in 2016, we'll have identified any adverse impacts from a wildlife perspective, and we'll have developed a mitigation plan again prior to going to the voters. Wastewater, another issue for us to deal with. Wastewater in that part of town, as you know, is provided through the Tiverton Wastewater District, and the treatment handled through the City of Fall River Wastewater Treatment Plan. The TWWD's agreement with Fall River allows up to 2 million gallons per day. The town is currently using less than 5% of its allocation. Our project requirements total about 30,000 gallons per day, or 1.5% of the town's allocation. So with Twin River's requirements, the town will be less than 7% of its overall allocation from a wastewater perspective. Our proposed solution on this is that we will connect to a pump station at the end of Hurst Lane. So as part of the roundabout, we'll install manhole in the middle of the roundabout. We'll pump there and then a gravity line down Hurst Lane. In addition, what we will do is we'll include laterals for homes that exist on Hurst Lane. So if they choose to connect to the town sewer system, they would be able to do that through the gravity pipe that we would put down Hurst Lane, which would be a much less expensive resident connection for them in that part of, on that street. From a stormwater perspective, you know, we're dealing with a lot of ledge and a lot of boulders and things on that property. But the system that we have begun to design will comply with the greater of Massachusetts or Rhode Island standards from a wastewater, from a stormwater treatment or stormwater perspective. We'll utilize low-impact development techniques. We'll try to mimic natural conditions wherever we can, and we are confident that the stormwater system that we envision will effectively address any and all issues that exist on the property. Safety and security. This is a conversation that happened, you know, virtually every night of the summer, and people wanted to know, you know, how we could get them feeling comfortable about having a facility like this in their community. And let me start by saying that issues will happen. And they happen at casinos, and they happen at universities, and they happen in parking lots, at supermarkets. It's how you go about preparing yourself for those and how you react to them when they happen. We have significant experience from a security perspective and have effectively mitigated, you know, many issues at Twin River. So as I mentioned in the past, you know, on an average day, we may have 16,000 people that visit us at Twin River in Lincoln. And on an average basis, we have three incidents that happen, only one of which requires a report. And the reasons why the number is so low is driven by how we operate the business. So we have our own security people on staff. We have our own surveillance team on staff. Every square inch of the facility is covered with cameras, and people become aware very quickly that it's not a place where you want to cause trouble. In addition, we have 24-hour, in the case of Lincoln, when we're open, police and emergent EMT details, where we handle almost every issue on property ourselves. The Rhode Island Lottery has significant engagement on property, and they have numerous lottery officials during all operating hours. The Rhode Island State Police have on-property presence. And again, as I mentioned, state-of-the-art camera surveillance for the entire property, which is the ability, gives us the ability to identify issues before they escalate. But it also lends itself to a significant investigatory resource if we do have problems. So this is not our first time before the voters in the state of Rhode Island. And we have a track record that we've developed. In 2012, we went before the voters of Lincoln and those statewide with a question to expand gaming at our existing property in Lincoln. We were able to garner over 70% support locally and statewide for that measure. And we did it with the help of a coalition of business and labor and local leaders who helped us communicate why it made sense. And we made some big commitments at the time. We promised that we would create 300 jobs. Back then, there were 900 people that worked at Twin River, and we said we'd get to 1,200. And we actually today have over 1,800 people working at Twin River. We talked about, you know, the number of Rhode Island vendors that we were using in 2012, which was about 165, and today we... 2012, which was about 165, and today we use over 300 Rhode Island vendors. We projected that, you know, we'd have 65 table games, which are labor-intensive, which drives some of the numbers that you see from an employment perspective, and by the end of the year, we'll have almost double that number. So we tend to try to be as humble as we can in our commitments and over-deliver wherever we can. So we heard about jobs. When we first started the conversation, we talked to the town about thinking that we'd need about 350 to 400 licensed employees, which are different than full-time equivalents. In our business, there's a fair number of people who prefer to work part-time. In reality, what we are going to need to operate this facility is about 525 to 600 employees, of which 375 to 400 full-time equivalents, to give you a sense. The average compensation package for these positions, which includes wages, benefits, and tips, will be over $56,000 a year. We've told you that our new colleagues from Newport Grand, many of whom have been there for, you know, close to 20 years or maybe longer, should have the first opportunity to come if we're successful in Tiverton, and we still believe that. But we're going to need more, we're going to need significantly more. There's 150 people that work there. And what we propose is that the first place we come looking for those people is to Tiverton. So we've committed to at least two job fairs, if not more, to try to create a pool of candidates for those positions. We've been very successful at training particularly our table game dealers at our own expense to work with us, and we're confident that we can create a pool of qualified candidates So we heard a lot about economic challenges facing the town, whether it be capping the landfill, or school renovations, and roads and sidewalk repairs, or a dog park. We heard a lot. And virtually every night, people said, you know, "How are you going to address, you know, can you address these problems?" And obviously, we can't address all of these issues. But we were asked how we might contribute to providing solutions for some of these, and we were consistent. It's really your decision on how you spend the gaming revenue if it's approved here. Different communities approach in their own ways. But, you know, we had a thought in terms of a possibility, in terms of how to raise immediate cash for some of the most pressing issues that you may face, and this is really up to you. So right now, we estimate that the property and personal property tax would generate about $750,000 to $800,000 a year. And one of the thoughts we had is that if we were to sit down with you and fix a number and agree to a contract that we guarantee for a period of 10 years, that you might be able to securitize that revenue and generate money upfront. It's only a thought, it's up to you, but we have seen that technique in other gaming developments in other parts of the country. So we put it on the table as, you know, people asked us a lot of questions about how you're going to help us, and, you know, this is one possible way, but again, it's up to you. So we took the proposal that you now have in front of you in terms of a casino and a hotel and a certain number of restaurants in that location. And we developed, we had a third party called the Innovation Group, which is kind of very well-known in the casino world, developed certain scenarios of what revenue would come from this location under different scenarios. So only a casino in Brockton, one in Brockton and Taunton, one in Taunton only, and none in the southeast. And the range is from $100 million a year to about $147. Revenues today at Newport Grand for their slot parlor are around $45 million a year. So this location moved closer to the Massachusetts border has a significant impact on the, you know, viability of a gaming facility, and the annual visitation ranges from 1.2 to 1.7 million. Again, at Twin River, I think we're at 5.8 or 5.9 million visitors a year in Lincoln. So here's the proposal that we have for the town from an economic perspective. First of all, there should be a minimum of $3 million a year to the town coming from this facility. We heard consistently that the town needs protection, that the voters want protection, want downside protection. So the proposal that we have discussed with the General Assembly leadership and the administration is that there's a $3 million minimum payment to the town per year, but that they get the greater of the minimum payment or slot tax and table game tax revenue share. So if the revenues from slots and tables are higher than $3 million, then you get the higher amount. And this is, you know, this is something, this minimum of $3 million a year is something that we've heard somewhat from the town of Lincoln as well. So it would be, oops, excuse me, protection that's in place for both communities, granted that in 2018, when this facility would be up and running, is when the true impact of the southeast zone will hit both communities. Slot tax rate of 1.45% will generate between $1 and $1.4 million on its own, based on the scenarios that Innovation was presented with. Table game tax of 1% between 320 and 460. Currently, table game tax expires after four years in Lincoln, and we're proposing that there be no termination of the table game tax in the town of Tiverton. That would go along going forward, and this would also be granted to Lincoln as well. What we're trying to do is harmonize the relationships that the two towns have with the state. Again, as I mentioned, Tiverton property tax, both tangible and intangible, we estimate between 750 and 800. That's really something we're going to have to get into with the town to figure out what it really is. And then there are various and numerous other taxes, fees, and permits that we think generate about $150,000 to $200,000. This relationship would be baked into the Rhode Island general laws. And if this relationship in substantially the same form is not what gets passed from the General Assembly, we will withdraw the question. So we're not, if this economic deal is not what you have, we're committed publicly to withdraw the question before the voters get to it in November of 2016. So point number one, if they're not substantially as proposed, and you're not getting what we told you or get, we will withdraw. That the roundabout is operational before the casino opens, and as we mentioned, we will not open the casino without an operational roundabout. We will make every effort to hire locally for positions at the casino. There'll be no neon signage on Route 24 or Kenning Boulevard or Stafford Road. There'll be no neon signage on the side of our building when you get into the property as well. We will deal with the water pressure issues that exist in the neighborhood, as well as the fire protection issues, and we commit to be a good community neighbor here. We have been very, very impressed with the respect that this town has shown us, and we very much appreciate, whether you're for it or against it, that you've treated us with nothing but respect, and it's, you know, residents are a class act as far as we're concerned, no matter what happens on a go-forward basis. And the last thing is, we're not looking for any special considerations or subsidies or anything, either from the town or from the state, to go forward. So I will stop. I have a little video to play you, and then we can come back. Hello, I'm John Taylor, the chairman of Twin River. Six months ago, Twin River Management Group came to the citizens of Tiverton to discuss the possibility of building a gaming facility in town. We didn't have any preconceived notions or drawings, only a piece of land and a concept. We spent the summer listening to the views of over 1,200 residents in over 35 community meetings and three formal charrettes. Among other things, we heard questions about traffic, the environment, the casino's appearance, and the amenities the casino should have. Based on your ideas and your concerns, here is what we've designed. That's our presentation.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
I had some, if I could, please.
Go ahead, Joe.
Good evening. You say you've answered a lot of my questions about water. I didn't see the tank, the water tank in the video, so I'm wondering where that was going to go, if that'd be my first question.
I think it goes underground, to be honest.
Is it underground?
Or above? Above? Can go either.
Yeah, just was wondering if, you know, the, like I said, you answered a lot of my questions about the water, and I'm glad to see the sewer line going down Hurst. I know you can connection down at Country View, which will help to support that part of the line. You're asking the town to rely on the state legislature for a lot of the revenue. Quite frankly, speaking for myself, you know, I don't trust the legislature. And even if they did pass it in the first year, it's an annual appropriation, so every year, they could change it. And in the past, I've watched legislation go in by Twin River to try to increase their portion, and the state, I think, had turned you all down a couple times in 2008 when the market went, and then I guess they were in bankruptcy up there for a while. So, you know, I don't trust the legislature, I'm speaking for myself, to even put the rotary in. And I know you said, you know, it wouldn't happen without it. But in my opinion, the rotary should be there before the town votes. That's a good faith ethic, that road gets fixed, which is a hazard, which we've been asking the state. We've got, I tell you, we've got areas in this town that have needed red lights, that people have been killed at. Granted, some of it was bad driving, but some of it was just innocent people who were just driving who were killed. We needed red lights in those intersections. We can't even get that from the state. So to tell me that the state's going to give me a guaranteed $3 million a year, you know, you're trying to sell an Eskimo ice cones. I mean, it's not going to happen here, I'm not going to buy it. So you had mentioned the word taxed agreement, and I think we should really sit down and talk about something where the town has guaranteed revenue, and we don't have to rely on the state. We'll let you negotiate with your lawyers, with the state on your percentage. You know, I'd rather have, in my personal opinion, something that the town, a number that the town can vote on, that we know is guaranteed. Because I can go on, and the number of things in this town that we've been promised by the legislature, to include where we went out and found a federal grant to have our stone bridge fixed, and now they're holding that, DOT, okay? So, you know, there's a little, there's not a lot of belief here that we can get that. Other than that, though, I think you guys have done a great job. I'm impressed with the presentation, except I didn't see the water tower, and that you've really stepped up on making sure that the neighborhood has adequate water continuously, and that sewer line is a big plus for the town, because it's a lot of money to run a sewer line in Tiverton, I'm sure you'll find that out. Thank you.
If I can just comment on the, in Rhode Island, constitutionally, the gaming facility is our state-operated, so it is technically the state's operation, and therefore, you know, necessarily, the relationship needs to be with the state. I will tell you that the town of Lincoln has not had any issues with its relationship with the state, with its tax rate, or with its revenue share, and I think consistently have been treated with respect from that perspective. I had a sense, given some past conversations with this council, that there was some skepticism that existed. And I'm committing to you, on behalf of our company, that if the deal is not in place, or the relationship between the state and the town is not in place when you get to November of next year, that we will withdraw the question, and that is probably the most that I can do and say.
I think the point is that the legislature, as you said, they're going to vote in the next session, but this guaranteed $3 million, you know, because, let's face it, what's going to happen is you're going to open, everybody's going to want to go there. But three years down the line, we know what happens, it's like a new restaurant. Unless you keep bringing on new stuff to get people to come back, like you said, you add on the entertainment or something later on, you know, to try to regenerate it. But I know that down the line, the revenues are going to drop down, even regardless of what happens en masse with the casino, just because the newness wears off. And that's where I'm worried. And then all it takes is one little crisis upstate, and they, you know, I mean, they start cutting the money to libraries and schools and everything else, the percentage paid back, you know, the pilot and the rest of it. So I've seen it happen in this state, I've been here long enough to watch where the the I've been here long enough to watch where the ball is rolling up there. Again, I'd like to see some of this stuff, rotary, that should be, before we even vote next, that should be done. That shows that the state, in good faith, you know, is, I don't want to wait until after the vote and then find out, oh, well, you know, you should have let us put tolls on the road or something.
John, if the rotary doesn't get built, then the casino, what I understand, will not open. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you've told the governor that?
Correct.
And I know the representative Edwards has been having conversations with the governor also concerning the rotary. So suppose you're all ready to go, and the rotary's not there. You will guarantee that you will not open.
We will not open.
Now also, has Lincoln's profits gone down since they've opened? How long have they been open?
Their tax rate, their tax rate has not gone down. It's stayed the same. So if you look historically at their relationship with the state, it's been stable. They experienced a little bit of a dip when Massachusetts came online, but given that they have table game revenue and slot revenue, overall, their share has been increasing, even in the face of Massachusetts competition.
Now, I imagine the DOT has looked at the changes that you proposed with the roundabout.
They have looked at them, and they said, yes, conceptually, they make sense, but obviously, they're going to want to get into, it's a relatively modest modification in terms of a right-hand turn lane.
Any councilists have questions? Now, as far as the roundabout, would you mind running that by IDPW and Polis also? Because the original roundabout was passed through them with their opinions and their Anyone else?
Yeah, I just had a couple quick questions. The numbers that were presented, John, for, let me find it before I, so it was something like between a million and, million one and a million four and a half of visitation. Let me see, a million and a quarter and a million eight. That is, do you break that down into how many individuals that is? Because it's not 2 million people, it's...
So the number... Excuse me, I'm sorry. The numbers, stop talking with my hands. The numbers, I think, were 1.2 to 1.7. Is that, is that...
People per car.
People, that's people. And then the factor for trips per car was 1.3, 1. people per car.
But that's not, but that's not individuals. That's an aggregate of all the trips they make.
No, no, that's individual.
That's individual people.
The 1.2 to 1.7 are individuals. And the assumption, the assumption is 1.3 people per cars, which will get you to aggregate number of cars and then divided by the number of days. And then the build on the market assessment is by geography, and they've taken it down with the traffic engineers to day parts, you know, what parts of days are busier than other days.
Okay, I don't think I've asked the right question, then. So you're saying that a million eight discreet individuals will visit the casino every year, more than once? So that count would be even higher.
The same person could come...
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, the same person could...
That's what I'm asking.
I thought you were talking about cars.
No, 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 no. Unique people.
Yeah, I don't think we have it by the number of unique individuals. It's visits, total visits.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I just have a couple of questions. For this economic relationship with the town, the state downside protection minimum of 3 million a year, does that include the slot tax rate?
It's only slot and table tax rate, not the town's property tax or any of the other fees that the town, or the food beverage tax, or the hotel tax.
Okay, so it doesn't include property tax or the food and beverage and hotel taxes?
Those sit outside.
So according to your estimate here, the, it should generate in the slot tax rate from 1 million to 1.4 mil. And the table game tax should, at 1%, should generate 320K to 460K. That's definitely...
Below the minimum.
Below, way below the minimum, it's like two-thirds, close to 2 mil versus the 3 mil minimum.
Correct.
So is this like...
So you get the greater of the minimum or the tax rate. So those numbers before you from the Innovation Group are, you know, conservative numbers from our perspective. If we're wrong and those numbers are higher, you would go with the tax rate. And if you went north of the $3 million, you'd get the tax rate over the minimum.
And, so just a question, Newport today, you said it's 45 mil total revenue?
Of course, gaming revenue from slot, it's only a slot parlor.
And how much of that revenue goes to the town, the city of Newport?
I think all in, they get about $1 million.
About $1 million? And so, Twin Rivers, you are, it's state-operated?
We're the manager.
You're like the management company?
Effectively. But we're responsible for the building and capitalizing it and cleaning it and all of those things.
Okay. So on the Newport side, with the 45 mil, what's the state's take on that?
Most current, last year, 24 point, 24 million.
24 mil?
Yep.
And what would be the state's take on the Tiverton proposal?
Ranges from, I think, 48, 49 to 70, depending on the scenario.
And they would guarantee 3 mil? So they would do the difference between if the casino generated in slot and table revenue, 1.8 mil, they would make up the difference out of there?
Correct.
48 through 70 mil?
Correct.
Potential? Okay. Thank you.
Madam President, please. Just, John, on your present comment, just keep in mind that if things change upstate, that can be changed in the next budget season. So it's not a guarantee from the state. I just want everybody to understand that. Even if they pass that legislation this year, they can turn around and reduce it next year. So it's not, nobody can say it's a guarantee. It's an annual appropriation by the legislature, and if things aren't tight, then we'll get it. But if things get tight upstate, there's a good chance that number could be reduced, just as our aid to cities and towns and the money we get to, you know, supplement to school bonds and things like that have shrunk over the years.
Let me just say that, I'll reiterate, that has not, that has not been our experience with the town of Lincoln. And if anything, I think the town of Lincoln has been treated with deference as it relates to this issue, because there are a lot of other things that the town of Lincoln controls in terms of what goes on in our building. And that if they are not, you know, pleased with how things are operating, you know, they have some, you know, they have some control.
Now, my understanding was the resolution will be no less than 3 million a year, but that is only for the first year.
No, that will be the rate that will go into the law. And again, you know, I can't disagree with, I can't disagree with what they have their right to do or not to do, but I can disagree, I can point out that the town of Lincoln has not had any of those challenges, and there have been some pretty lean budget years recently where they didn't experience what you suggest.
Just a comment. So the state has a dog in its fight, realistically. I don't really see them wanting to give up a large amount of their share, but, you know, if they're getting, how much was it from Lincoln?
The state generates over $300 million a year from Lincoln.
From Lincoln. That's a lot of money.
Any other questions? Concerns? Matt, do you have anything? All right. Like I said, next Monday, we'll have public comment. I wanted everyone to go home and digest this. Some of this presentation will be on your website, you said.
So the deck and the video and the fact sheet will be on the website. The reports will be at Town Hall.
And I did this because some people weren't, I believe some people probably weren't able to make this meeting. I wanted, this will be telecast on Cox, and I wanted everyone to see it, digest it, and come back with questions next week, so everybody can feel that they've had a say in this. I want to thank Twin Rivers. You have also been very good to Tiverton and very respectful to Tiverton. And everyone who's gone to any of your presentations have felt that way. And thank you also, John. Thank you. I'm going to take a 10-minute recess while we clean up a little bit.